Rain in a lot more and it's balls. Did here.
We had about a hair span here.
At three thirty this morning, I had a quarter of Wakanda that rain.
Yeah.
Quite a bit since then, so.
It's the best rain we've had all year.
Yeah, as long as the temperature stays.
They're all run off.
Long as the temperature stays where it's at, I.
Well, there ain't much, there isn't much frost.
No.
There is no, but just enough to keep it.
I suppose keep it on top.
Yeah, and let it freeze there.
It'll freeze there. But I, it'll, I think it'll soak in the ground.
It gets up.
Because it, it's not very far down.
I don't know when I'll get back.
Maybe the warm rain will work its way down. The thirty-five when I come in now, till it's warming out.
We'll see, I probably won't get to here till Friday. We're supposed to get like two feet, it's eighteen inches there.
Yeah.
We'll see.
It's pretty slippery around Wakanda this morning, but part of the south's the better.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I had to.
I've got nine o'clock and we call the meeting to order, start with pledge allegiance. Roll call.
Mockler. Packard. Here. Smith. Here. Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, verbal agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Local.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion approved. Provenance.
Move to approve minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, vocal.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes. Motion approved. Uh, visitors here.
Okay, I'm a visitor today, I just have, these are, just got delivered to our office yesterday. I mean, the twenty twenty-three four H.
Thank you.
Calendar, and we had two four H'ers this year who got selected to be in the calendar, there is April and May. So I just wanted to talk about you guys and thank you for your support last year and your service.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you guys.
Any other visitors?
I'm a visitor today too, um, I just wanted to let you guys know that the, uh, we got our check from the state for reimbursement, they, they will pay up to two hundred and fifty dollars per successful computer for juvenile diversion, diversion. Um, and this past year, they divided equally amongst counties, this past year, they paid two hundred and nine dollars and twenty-eight cents per successful computer. And so we have a check for two thousand three hundred and two dollars and eight cents, um, coming back to us, offset diversion costs, so I'll get that to Carrie here at the end and.
With base. Any other visitors? Hearing none. Rod.
Morning. Well, we have the three townships. Um, that applied for application present, so. I don't know how you wanna start with. Just have them come up and tell you, y'all got a copy of their request, I don't know what we need to do, I guess. And, and Brad's here too, so. For that.
Maybe, maybe I could start, I, I, I have, I printed out some maps, cause I think there were some questions on, you know, where they're at, what we got and, and the like. Um, I wasn't, you know, I, I saw.
I may wanna get to Mike.
Yeah. Yeah, yep, so, um, I brought some maps of, of, of the, the small structures that, that we logged in. Um, pass out whoever wants them, I only brought, I was sure how many, I brought seven, we can make some copies, I imagine. Um. So what I guess said, and I think the question last meeting on what we did and how we did it, so we went out and logged in everyone that, that we knew of, that was sixteen square feet. Um. So to qualify for the small structure. Um. You need, it, it could be a bridge that from inside face to inside face of the abutments is less than twenty feet. Or a culvert, or a series of culverts that, um, add up to more than sixteen square feet. So, um, I know there's some questions about, you know, if you had more than one culvert, if you have more than one culvert, as long as it's in the same. Creek. Nope, no, no, so as long as it's in the same creek, if they're a little further apart. We, we can log those in. Um, so I, I know I was visiting with one of the, they had a question on, you know, there's a lot of these little WPA culverts. But they gotta be. You know, they don't. They, they have a floor in them, so they're a culvert, so they gotta be sixteen square feet, and I, and I know there's a lot of, it seems like five by three is a common size. You know, they're a concrete cover of the head wall on them, but what I'll throw out, and, and I did bring, so he, and, and whoever wants him, raise your hand, here's all the whole county, but I did bring. Put it out all the townships individually, individually to everyone in the county, so, um. Um, what I didn't do is go walking ditches and looking for them, so, um. You know, if there are some, cause there's, I know there were some like, well, we have to have more than that, I'm happy to, I got a map here, put an X on the map and send it to me, happy to go look at it and lock them in. And I'll, and I can kind of leave these here too, so, um, or if you just wanted to have. You know, have Adam, I only made one for each, but I imagine we can get the copy made if, if you guys want.
Do you have an inspection report for?
Um, I, I, I don't have an inspection report.
I think maybe it was the dude I talked to.
Um, I did print, I did plot that out, um. I had, so what we did is we logged that all into the state's GIS system. So I have to get the reports from the DOT. Um, you know, I, I, you know, they, they had a collector, um, program that, that we had to use, so I couldn't put it in, I wanted to put it in our system too, that we had it, but I couldn't. I had to log it right into theirs. Um, they have a website, it's not particularly hard to use either. Um, that you can log on, you don't need anything, any special program, and it, and it looks. An awful lot like this, cause I plotted, when I plotted this kind of from that, right, where I say hi, what are you guys, guys? And you go to here, and if you just click on one of those icons, it brings up the whole report, you know, yep. So this is the whole county. Yep. And I'm, the whole one back, just engage in the big hobbies, anyone else, hobbies? Okay, and I, I know, and I, I brought one for each of you too, so can have Adam, and, and, so if. If you. I, I hate to defer that, but I, I don't have that, so, so you gotta, but the DOT's GIS people are really easy to work, so, so if you got questions on.
Well, we have wood structures and cement structures.
Yeah.
You know, or not good, posted or, or little right, little right, or whatever, like, what, we don't know whether, all right, who's liable for this?
Yeah, what we did not do is, you know, so we gave them a, a, they come a good fair or poor rating, and, um. We didn't crunch the numbers, cause I mean, I wasn't. Part of the, but, but, you know, T one, it's been even, so, um, I mean, we have semis. Sure.
Yeah. All kinds of things going over with structures.
If, if you have. You, you. If you have a concrete culvert. If, if I were to prioritize which ones I want, I wanted to, so to look at as far as structurally, the concrete culverts was WPA ones. They would be the last on my list to be worried about, um, with the highest timber bridges, cause they've been there probably a long time, as long as anyone knows. Um. I can look at them for you, what, what a kid, here's one of them, so I can do two things. Um. I, I, I personally could, would, would, could go in there and look at them and give you. What I, I can tell you what I think, for free, but that's worth what you pay for, um. And then, then if you need, if we need to cut some numbers, I'll tell you, hey, I think you better cut some numbers, but that might cost, I don't know, six hundred bucks or something like that, so, depends on the bridge.
So your company can come in and inspect our, our bridge?
Yeah, yeah, and, and we can, we can, we can crunch the numbers and give you, uh, just like you see on some of the, the county ones, uh, that, that have the low posting signs, and we can give you, uh, a record, you know, title it, that it needs posting or not, and, and if it does, well, it should be, yeah.
We have one that posted already now with three ton, uh, can you come in and look at that, tell us?
You know. You know, what, if you're wondering if we're gonna raise it or not?
No, I'm.
Cause we.
You know, how fit the priority list of what, what these folks are looking at.
Yeah, um, I, I, and, and I can, and usually, three ton is as low as you can go. Um. If this were a twenty-foot bridge, three ton is as low as, as I can post them, is where the feds say, so is it? So that, that's the minimums, they can, they can, they can be any more than that one. So usually they're three, but if they're down to three ton. Different stuff, yeah.
Is that three ton one a timber bridge then, Ron?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's. And, and what I found. Yeah, yeah, so I do, it's, you know, so I look at some of the bridges, the neighboring counties, and what, and what I, what you see a lot of is these timber bridges were built all in about the same ten-year window, thereabouts. So it's. You know, kinda. Realistic, they're all gonna go bad in about the same ten-year window, so, so, um. I guess. Is, uh, if you got these, those timber ones.
We have a structure that.
Could, could audience members use microphones, please?
Am, am I not using? Oh, oh. Yeah, if you can come up.
And speaking to the microphone with your questions, so everyone, I think we got, so.
One, one commissioner, at least, that's remote.
I, you know, um.
Maybe.
How do they measure a wood structure bridge, twenty feet from the deck, on the deck?
No, it's inside, so the question was, how, how do you measure a, 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 a timber bridge to see if it's under the twenty feet? And the measurement is from the, under the bridge, oh, it's opening, so it's inside face to inside face. Well, on a timber bridge, you have the back wall, and then you have the piles, okay? So what I usually do is the pile, but it's easier to go, you'll have a timber pile, and then there's usually like a twelve by twelve beam, what I normally do is, I, I measure across pile cap to pile cap, because the piles aren't. All, they're, you know, they're made out of a tree, so they're not all the same diameter, that, that's, that's what I do, so in it, the twenty feet and, and I just got one of those little laser, little laser, you can use for like measure up a room, that will get you one real quick. And so if you're gonna go measure them, they're not very expensive, if you had one, that's, you can do them by yourself, and, and you don't have to cross the ice and all that.
We have one, bridges listed as the county bridge now, and it measures eighteen foot, um, on the deck.
Lot, lot. Okay, so, so you have one that, that is. The counties, if, if we say a county bridge, it's on their map, for their bridge. Okay, but you think it's eighteen feet, well, that's, I did not measure them beams, yeah, so you gotta go under it, um. Um, I haven't looked at the, the county's bridges, but I see that from time to time, um, what was, what was done is. Geez, this is probably forty, it was in a, it was nineteen seventy, I think, so long, is the federal government passed a law that all the bridges had to be inspected every two years, so they went out and in, inventoried them and measured them, so I see that they, sometimes they're. When I use my laser, they're off a bit, so what, if it's eighteen feet and the federal thinks it's twenty, you know, a couple things, so, sometimes they tilt in over time, because you, you have the abutments and the earth pressure wants them, and, and I, you know, time to take a four-foot level, and they're never straight anymore, so it may have, but not two feet. They may have, it may have been a blunder, or you may not have quite measured it, right, you gotta get under it. Okay, any other questions on that, I did bring my hand. Book here, with all that, that, the. I got this one to be, or see, so if you got questions, and, and you guys can call me anytime, um. You can get this online too. This'll walk you through everything that I'm telling you. It's in this little book here, on how to, how to measure on, what counts and what doesn't count, and the like, um. Like I say, a group of culverts lying in the same drainage, that has a combined opening of sixteen feet or greater, like, you know, a pair of forty-eights, hangers, that counts. So it's, but, so the rule is the same drainage, so if you got them, and there's a couple of them, and they're ten feet apart, but it's the same creek, and I, I've seen that a bunch where there's an old culvert, and then someone puts some in beside it, those can count, but what, like I said, I, I didn't walk through the ditches and, and search up, so, so, you know, you know, so, so people are saying, oh, there's more. Happy to log them in, but I, I didn't do that when I did my, my initial. And we went in and locked them all.
You brought an updated map for our township, whenever you want it.
Yeah, I'll take it, yeah, yep. And, and, but now, and what I've seen, cause others, other townships and other counties, and I've had the same conversation, is they, you know, when you give me your map, first thing I'll kind of compare it to the county, cause what I found is.
Could audience members use microphones, please, we can't hear what, any of the questions?
Um, uh. So the, the question was, this is a comment, he'd, he'd had a map that he was gonna leave, and, and, and so. If, if you got something that you think that you missed, give them to me, log them in, no problem, um, I do check them immediately against the, the list of the county structures, cause what I found is. That they get circled, or people think that they're a township, when it may be on a township road, but if it's over twenty feet, or if it's under, it's under twenty feet long, and on a to, on a county road that goes through a township, that doesn't count either. So. Anyway, that's, that's kind of my, what I wanted to come here and make sure that, if there are any questions that, or, and, and it's for, for those of you that are on the, a web too, like I say, um. You know, call me up, if you can't remember my name, or, or anything, ask Rod and he'll, he'll, he'll get some.
So Brad or Rod?
Yes.
Do you know? On this twenty percent that we don't work, can they bank that?
Okay.
Or do they have to spend it on that project?
Here. I, 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 I didn't quite. Ask that question, but, but here is, here's the question, I, I did a little. Digging on some of the questions I thought might come up, and one of them was, so you got a hundred and forty grand or something like that. Um. And you're, and you're wondering, can the townships bank that up? Probably, here, here, so the rule is, is you have to spend the, the money in four years. So, I, I guess. If, if you were gonna bank some up, how I would do that is. Um. So say you didn't spend all a hundred forty thousand this year. And then you, you rolled some of that into next year and made it a bigger award, you can do that, okay? But. Say, say you, you rolled over a hundred grand. The hundred grand from this year has to be spent within four years, so if you had two years combined, you, you see where I'm going with this, is half of that money might need to be spent in three years, and half of it in four years. You, you just gotta make sure you don't lose track of that, or, because if you don't spend it. Um, and the other question was, can we, if we needed more, and there's counties that don't spend it all, can we have theirs, and the answer is no. If you don't, if, if you don't spend it all within the four years, goes back to the state, goes to the general fund.
So. If we were to award all of the money, all the hundred and forty-three thousand.
Right.
To these three townships.
Could they come back in and, uh, apply again for the rest of it?
Um, I mean, could they come back in and apply next year? Um. And save the money we gave them this year and build that bank up to?
I, I tell you what, I, I tell you what, first of all, well, here's what I throw out, I don't know for sure, but I tell you what I think, I think you can, okay? Um, or another way to do it would be to pick the worst one and award all of it, and have the other two come in next year. You, you see where I'm going with, or there's, you know, or, or anywhere, or any kind of combination in between. So, but there are gonna be some of these, like these small bridges. You know, an eighteen-foot bridge. You know, you. Yeah. You may, you may end up putting like a precast box culvert in, and that's gonna cost you two hundred fifty K minimum. I mean, I put some in for about that in, over my own point, so it's kind of the list of going rate last year. You know, you can figure about, about a hundred grand to buy the culvert, and about another hundred to put it in for a round-figure estimate. So your hundred fifty isn't gonna cover one of those small bridges, so. I'll toss that out, so that you, you know what.
If the inventory numbers for the county are raised to what they should be currently.
Next year, you'd get more money, yeah.
We'd be eligible for more.
Yeah, yeah, I.
The county would.
Right.
It would bring up.
Yeah, like, like, if there's a, if there's some of them under there that qualify, I'll get them logged into the system, and then, then they do, and they do their formula, so, that might change. Um, yeah. There are a lot of them. Alright, so I will throw out, it would take a lot of them to raise it any significant amount, cause it's a ratio, they, they, the, the legislature awarded X number of money, and then they just ratioed it out, so. You know, it's. You know, if, if, you know, if there's a half a dozen or so, you're, it's gonna not, not, not hide it, it's hard to say this, that isn't gonna raise your ratio hardly at all, but, but we should get them right, I, I mean, we want them right, cause there's two reasons we want this in the database, one is, you can't manage what you don't know we have. So, and so if they're out there, we want them in the database so that we can know about them, and, cause, cause that's what I found out when we were starting to do these, is there's an awful lot of them that we don't know about, that, I mean. We trip over them, and then we log them in, so, they're, they're out there.
And then the other thing would be, if they're not on the inventory, we can't use the twenty percent to help replace them.
I don't think so. I think that's the rule.
We need to make sure they're on.
If you, especially if you got one you wanna do, make, and I got to the map, if it's not on, we'll get it on there, I mean, I get it on there next week, or, you know, I can't tomorrow, because it's gonna blister, but it's, it's not, I, I, I could, we could add those. Fast and easily. Anybody else have any questions, comments? And I'm gonna leave these here too, so if you wanna. Copy of your township. I did dig through, um, or, you know, this is the individual townships, I, I did, I, what I tried to do is I sent these out, but I know some are saying, well, you didn't get them, and what, you know, I went. I had a list of, of board members, township board members, and email addresses that I got from, I think, the courthouse here. Um, your board, your towns and township boards wouldn't give it to them, so I, but I got it, and I sent this to e- everyone on that list, you know, like, earlier this year, and, um. You know, asking for up, up, I didn't get any back, so, um, there might be a few, but that, I suspect that, um, it's, the number's closer to right, but, but if you, like I said, I know, I know you guys thought you had something, we'll get them done, no problem.
Brad?
Yes.
Is it possible to find out? If they can come back and apply next year again, and if they, how this all works, cause you're, you're saying you're guessing, but, and I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
But you're not a hundred percent sure, and they guys need a hundred percent sure.
I did not ask that question specifically, what I did ask is about spending the money, and so if you don't award it all, you can roll it over, okay? But, but, but then you, like, you just got, you just gotta manage that, so that you make sure that that money is spent within four years, and. I don't know how it's gonna go, they're, they're probably gonna send something to Carrie, want her to account for how much you spent, I, this is a new program, so there's a lot of, of questions like that, that.
You think it's gonna be an ongoing program?
Oh, I do.
Cause that's, that'd be nice, they don't want a one-time deal.
And the, the reason that I, that I knew, or.
No.
Cause it, cause it won't go very far, and, um. Um. You know, there are. There are a lot of them out there, and everybody knows it, and that's one of the. Yeah, with your towns and townships, your lobbyists, but. You know. You know, you get a hundred fifty grand, but what, you can eat that up really, really quick, especially when you're looking at five-foot diameter culvert, so they're thirty thousand a pop, um, just buy them. They, it, it goes real fast, so. Especially these little bridges, I don't know, I don't know what you guys are gonna do with the little bridges, cause they're, they're, they're. And the prices are going up really fast, and, um.
I'd like to talk to you after the meeting on an option for a bridge we got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Whoever spoke.
Yeah, he, he just wanted to talk to me after the, after the meeting, he had a spec, on a question on a specific bridge, um, what, what, what we've done in, in other, you know, we're right next door in Union County, and we've done, I don't know, done, uh, ten, twelve of them. Is we pre-purchased the box culvert from the fabricator, and then we hire a little, a little, anyway, hire a contractor, install it, and we beat the DOT by half, probably. Um. Um, it gives you a, a bigger list of folks who will do the work, if, um. Uh, yeah, repurchasing the box takes a lot of the load off the contractor, or, you know, and it, they just, the fabricator delivers it to the site when they call, so, um, it's easier to bond, it's, it's easier for them to float the cash, and I, and I got a bunch of local bidders now that are wanting to put those in, you know, we had a guy from Hudson that's done a bunch here at, um, North Sioux City is, it's done some, and we, but we'd get a few that'll come in from Marshall, Minnesota, also, put them in fast. So, that's, that's a, that's a good way to do it, but, but.
Really keeps the cost down.
It, it keeps it down, is, and, and when I do those, these are, these are not highly engineered, though, these are low, low budget deals, but, but we've really, we, we've squeezed that down to as far as I think we can.
Yeah, I think, I think Mike's question earlier is a really critical one, because what I wouldn't wanna see happen is, um, you know, uh, money, for example, going to Garfield, I mean, uh, that wouldn't do the whole job, and then if Garfield couldn't afford, or was unwilling to pay the difference, and, and then, so they didn't do the project, and because they couldn't apply for money for the same project again the second year, then, uh, Garfield's out, the whole county is out, so I, I, I think that's a really important question, because what I wanna be able to do, I mean, ideally, it's, you know, what, 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 what Mike hopes it is, right? Ideally, you know, you get a certain amount of money this year, you can bank it, you apply again next year, but what happens if next year, the state says, uh, no, no, we already gave you money for that bridge last year, you, you, you know, and, and you haven't done it yet, so we're not giving you more money for that bridge. If that happens, and, and, you know, uh, supposing Garfield then couldn't afford the balance within the four years, well, we, you know, we, we would have just lost, uh, a hundred thousand dollars amongst us, so. You know, we, we would have just lost, uh, a hundred thousand dollars amongst us, so. This is not a small amount of money and I think especially for a township. So I, I think that question, getting that question answered is really critical.
And here's what I can do and what I would, what I planned on doing is as soon as we're done and you move on to other stuff, I'm gonna step in the hall and see. I might be able to find that out like pretty, pretty quick and, um.
Does this all have to be turned back in, it's like they awarded the money? For these projects that they have in front of them? So does something have to go back to the state to prove what they. Spent the money on? I didn't think, I thought they left that up.
I think that's up to. You know, are you high, because you'll have to have a system and how you account for it and, and give it to them. You, you, and, and, you know, somehow you're going to have to account that it was, was spent where it is. You can. They can send you a bill, however you want to, want to manage that. That's what the DOT did not put out was how to manage that. But, but you're going to have to somehow. And, and I imagine what's going to happen is they're going to have a report at the end of the year from Kerry on. How much the money was spent and where, um, somehow and you'll have to. Invent a system. I know it probably, you know, just have them submit copies of contractor bills and the line, fabricator bills and the like. That's how that would go, but I, I, I'll call the DOT straight away. The guys that I need to talk to is. Health is not great, so it might not, I might not be able to find out right away, but he's usually pretty good.
Yeah, I, I think this will also affect the way we allocate funds.
Yes.
Um, you know, because if, 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 if people can't reapply, if townships can't reapply for the same money the following year. Then we probably want to give all the money to the most, you know, high priority project. Otherwise, you know, we, we might actually, if, if people can apply again, then we might actually do it proportionally. It just.
And, and I can find that out. Uh, there are not very many rules, which is why I'm thinking that you probably can do that because. What they did, how, how they, how the DOT kind of proposed that to me was. Um, the, the management of the appropriate, they're going to give you the, the money, but the management of an award and all of that. Is, is up, up to you five. So that's why I, I have a feeling they're gonna. But I'll, I'll, I'll make that call. You, we, we, and maybe what we can do, we can, we can table it. I'll run out the hall.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to make that decision today.
Oh, oh, okay. That, yeah, then, then I can, uh, I, I, I'll find out what I can, but I, I know I can. I should be able to find out if not right away this morning, you know.
Brad, you were gonna have to call to peer then?
Yeah, I was calling.
Yeah, they're, they're closed today, so.
Yeah, but I, I have a cell in my cell.
Good, okay.
Question is the, the hundred and forty-three, the state's portion, the total cost of projects? Or?
Yeah, that dollar amount is what we have to award to the townships. That's what the state has given us.
Well, if I'm figuring right on what they're asking, the one I'm confused by is Bethel. It's. We have enough to give that portion to each of them.
We don't have, we don't have enough for Garfield. They're, they're requesting a hundred ninety-two thousand.
Okay, I had that as the grant portion, not our portion.
Well, that is, we are giving grant. This isn't coming from the county.
Okay. And I have something confused. Thank you.
We're on the opposite side now of the normal. We're, we're actually the grantors.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
We're trying to figure out, you know, we gotta give, they're requesting eighty percent from, from this one.
Thank you.
Two hundred and forty thousand.
Right.
Their twenty percent is forty-eight, that leaves a hundred and ninety-two.
Right. And I had that coming from the state. Wishful thinking.
This would be a lot easier if it was that way too.
Can hold the money over? But now can they hold the money over and build it up to distribute out between everybody or not?
That's what I'm going to find out. I'm gonna make that question. I'm gonna pose that question from the, to the DOT that's, that's specifically. Can, can they hold it over and, and build it till they, and then award it all at once? So it, it, right now, how it is, is so if the county were to award you some money. You gotta spend that four years or it evaporates and you don't get it and they don't get it back.
I was just wondering if they'd lose it, if we, if they didn't grant it out, if they lose it.
Got four, four.
Four years also.
They have four years to spend it is what they, what they told. But I, I, I'm not, I'll, I'll call it, I'll call peer here just, just a little bit.
Just a question. They need more money next year. Is there any guarantee that suppose every township applies next year? Is there a guarantee they're gonna? It's like.
No.
And, and that's up to the five of us on how we do it. But he needs to answer that one question before we.
Yeah.
Keep beating that question up.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll. I think we're, I think we're to a stopping point on the rural infrastructure until you get that question answered. So then we'll move on to the D one pipe.
Okay.
Payment.
Then the townships just say a few words on behalf of the project at this meeting?
You can, sure.
Yeah.
Just like to say a few words, we could.
Yeah.
Go to the mic.
Ron Peterson, Star Township. Um, first of all, I just want to thank the commission for a couple of years ago when you helped us out with a structure that was somewhat of an emergency situation. It was cracked, it was, um, moving under traffic and you partnered with us and we thank you for that. Um, the one we're here, uh, applied for this year is one of the WPA structures that Brad was talking about. Um, it's extremely bad shape as far as safety. You drop off eleven feet straight down, it's only sixteen feet wide. You can't get two-way traffic through it. You can't get today's farm equipment through it. Um, and, uh, the wings have broken off, there's old timber holding it up. Um, and it's not the three-ton bridge that we're talking about, but with the pot of money you folks have. We couldn't have played, we couldn't apply to replace that structure anyway. That's on our list to apply for next year. And we are looking at possibly doing a little water crossing. We would eliminate that bridge. Put in a couple of culverts, lower the road, let the water go over the road in certain events and through the structure on smaller events. But we need to verify with Brad if that's doable, uh, liability-wise, a number of things. So we didn't apply for that one this year. But we want to enhance the safety in our township with this project this year. It's a, a small fraction of your money, it's only less than a third of it. So we would like to see, uh, see at least you move forward with that so we can see some infrastructure improvements in the county and in our township. Supervisors, anything I missed? Thank you for your time.
Anybody have anything else they want to add or? So we'll move on to, do we need to wait for Brad, Ron, on this bike payment?
I don't think.
Yeah.
Straight board, this is the final payment, correct?
Uh, all except, I think he kept a little back for, so it gets seeded next year. We have to wait till next spring to seed it because it got too late. So I don't know if he kept a little back.
He said he did. He's, he said that we would pay the seeding next year. I think that's what he told me in the email, but I mean, clarify with him when he comes back in, but.
Yeah, I, I'm wondering if anybody from Bethel Township is here.
Yep.
Yeah, because.
I think so.
No.
Oh, we're all star.
You're all star, okay, okay. Cause Bethel did not complete the, enough of the application to really make a, a fair decision. Um, and I'm wondering if we can, um, I don't know, Rod, if you can call the people from Bethel and say, you know, this, the, this application doesn't have enough information in it.
Um, yeah, I thought they were coming. I guess I didn't notice.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's nothing in here to tell us what. Yeah, what, why, why their project is important or what's really wrong or what really needs to be fixed or. You know, so I, I think they're, they're, they're going to be out of the running unless they give us a little more information. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't give you folks any time. Do you have any questions for Star on our project?
No, your application was great. A very complete, yeah.
No.
Good job.
We, we started on the D, D one pipe thing. We kept a little back for the seeding, right?
Yes, yeah, so, so. Do I mean, uh, yeah, so the, what, what, what that D one pipe is, 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 is really everything but the seeding. Um, so, so, um, we'll come back in the spring after they seed it, then I'll close the project out. So there's no final change order, none of that at this time. It's just to, to, to square up with the work that he's, that they did so far.
Make a motion to, uh, approve the pay request.
I'll second it. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Backler.
Yes, motion passes.
You know, you, you want him to go back to. I got the scoop, okay. Yeah. Um, so the question is, one of the questions was. Basically, the answer was yes. There's no cul, there's no culvert police. However you want to administer the program, you can, okay? Just the only, the only rule that's in the, that, but then that's in the, the regulation is spend it in four years. So you can do partial awards and they can reapply until they got enough. You can award it to all one, or you can award it to all one and make him come back and if that's not, uh, any combination that you want to do. The DOT is not going to insert themselves at all. That, then that's what I thought. That's, that is the case.
I do think we want it out of our hands and into theirs.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want the state to come back and go, well, the county's just sitting on it. They're not giving it away.
Yeah.
So at least if they have it. It looks like we're, and even if they don't spend it that year, at least you guys are getting the money. Any other questions right now for that?
Is said that there's a program next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, well. We can't, we can't worry about that. We can only worry about what we know today.
Well, I'm, I'm going, if we award. Partial to. The most expensive and we don't get money next year. Where does that leave the commission?
In the same spot we were before this program came.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not a good answer and, I mean, it's not good for the townships if they only get. If this program were to go away, that's a bad deal for them, but I guess it'd be, it's more money than they had yesterday.
True.
They still have the money for other projects, so they might not be able to do that project. You know what I'm saying? They might have to, instead of that hundred fifty thousand dollars project and they got forty thousand from us. They might have to go down to a forty thousand dollar project. They, I'm sure they got other projects in their township that they could work on.
Well, in the five-year plan, they had other.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We don't want to have that happen, but.
No, that works for me.
As long as they got the money, I think they'll figure out a way to spend it.
Yeah, and I'm hoping they at least do the program for two or three years to get everybody involved and see how it works before one and done.
Disappointed that we haven't had some of these other townships having applied. I think you guys done a great job. Coming in and apply for something you see and take, you, you taking advantage of it. That's what you're supposed to do as township people. And disappoints me that I'd see some of these other ones not even show up with anything, you know, I, and I know they got projects out there.
Yeah, they can call me and I'll, I talked to Pleasant Valley today. If they want to call me, I'll spoon feed them right through the whole.
Yeah.
Process. I'll fill out the form for them even.
Yeah, and at the very least, to having a, have a good inventory of bridges in their, their condition too is. Pretty important because if we, if we under-report, chances are in the future when other programs come up, we've got fewer. Fewer listed, they're going to say, well, their needs are smaller. So our chances of getting. Further grant money in the futures can be affected by having a complete, a true and complete inventory of all these bridges. Uh, one of the other things I wonder about too is, is, uh. Order of importance was where you put, like stars, put them in, in order of importance to have it replaced right away. Did you take into consideration other things like school, school, uh, bus routes and those sorts of things that would be important? Uh, making one bridge more important than another because of, of use. I noticed there's, uh, two or more. Residents is served by the bridge and how far it is to do detour around, but say if we had two of those, had a flood or something and. Two bridges that were on the same reach went out at the same time. It'd be really important to get one, at least one of those done and the sec, second would be a secondary importance. Just some of those things I'm, I'm just tossing out there.
Can I bring up some information you guys can look at?
Sure.
I don't know if you guys get this. We get that from the towns and township association, that's our ranking.
Under the microphone?
He's, he's handing me this pamphlet that shows our ranking throughout the state of our small structures.
Garfield townships, red are open or not minimum maintenance. The only one we have in question is there, the only through road yet. So we don't have many for bus rolls. They're their minimum maintenance are closed, the ones that are not in red. The one on three oh eight is the one that we're proposing to do. That's almost true.
Anybody have anything else to add?
That's a scary map.
Does have any other questions? Just let us know. Uh, since Brad's not in here, Dennis, we'll get you out of the way.
Uh, you said that form for, well, our local noxious weed, um, plumus thistle and, uh, and. Must so, they have to be renewed every five years and I recommend we keep renewing it. Uh, it just needs to be signed by you and I need a copy of the minutes to go along with it too on the application.
On the list.
Huh?
They've been on.
They've been on the list all the time, yes, yes. Right, right, but it's a local noxious weed, it's not a state lock just, noxious, so every five years it has to be reviewed.
Craig, you mind if I take a picture? If I have any questions for Dennis on this?
Travis, is your microphone on?
Oh, I was probably too far away from it. I was wondering if anybody had any other questions for Dennis before we approve this.
I moved to approve it. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Miss.
Backler.
Yes, motion passes.
Okay, the only other thing I have just to mention is my cabota hasn't showed up. The, my machinery budget money will be reimbursed to the county. Hopefully it'll show up next year and I'll be asking for the money back. But, uh, that's the way to, uh, Kerry tells me they do it, so. All right, anything else?
Any idea when it might show up?
No, not a clue. I said, do I need to reorder it? And he said, well, that'll put you back on the bottom of the list, so.
Yeah, it's every, everybody's got that problem this year.
I mean, I, I were fortunate enough that there's nothing wrong with this cabota. I just feel the need to keep them somewhat updated. But we'll be doing just. We'll be doing just fine. Anything else?
No. Thanks. So you just need a copy of this?
Yes, and the minutes, yes, that it was voted on. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Those things can change pretty fast. I noticed that, you know, two months ago that you couldn't order a Ford pickup. Now they're giving thousand-dollar rebates on them. This I noticed in the, on the TV the other day.
Pickup you want to get.
Yeah, right.
Quarter ton is hard to get.
Right.
A four fifty chassis.
No.
Still not sure if we'll get one next year. Never did get one this year. And don't matter, Dodge and Chevy are the same way.
Right, yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to go on the ditch board.
I don't know if you picked up on the handout that you got, but we applied to, this is a structure we're downsizing, so we went through the Corps of Engineers to get that permit to do that. That has a sunset clause on it, so that expires in a few years, so just so we don't lose track of that timeframe.
Thanks. I'll entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, for roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, we're in ditch board. Invoices for approval. What do we have?
I don't know, I didn't put it on.
You know what that is, man?
That all, all advertising?
It's in the packet. It's for advertising.
Okay. So we just need a motion to approve advertising.
Yeah, I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yeah.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, motion passes. Trees in the Yankton Clay Ditch.
So. The big mystery from the last meeting on how come that hadn't. Been let on the county line to the east. Had been let. We did it ourselves. May fifth, as you see the minutes. Um, you. Waited and finally awarded it to three D digging and it's done. He moved in over the weekend. When he called me last week and said he was gonna move down there. I'm like, I gotta find out what happened because. I, I wasn't sure, so I looked back through the minutes and. And yes, we'd okayed him to do it. And he did it. He mulched them all up. I drove it last night. And there is nothing there. It looks way better than the first one he did. Right, so the first mile and a half. Mile and three eights, whatever came out to be. He got that done and I told him to send Kerry. You send her the, the bill. So it don't get mixed up at our office or something else. So. That had got let. I told him, go ahead and do it once I found the. Minutes, so just so if you were in question, that's why Brad didn't know anything about it because we did that one ourselves.
And it doesn't matter, Kerry, if he gives us the bill this year or next year. Since it's just, it's not, it's not general fund money.
Right. Yeah, I think it's fine.
Yeah, the only thing I was nervous about is. In May or April, I guess, they only had fifteen thousand, six hundred seventy bucks. But then I figured they must have got some in October again.
Yeah.
So because I believe the award was for thirty-five thousand. I saw it here somewhere.
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah, it's thirty-five K.
Okay. Don't, I just wanted to bring that up so I could tell you it was done and why it got done.
Sounds good.
I have one more thing on ditch board on the Yankton Clay Ditch. I actually found the thumb drive Kerry gave me. That has all the minutes. Nineteen hundred and four. Up to whatever, but we were looking for. The right away on the Yankton Clay Ditch. At one point, I think. So I found them. And I didn't have time to print it out to give you. But they are there and it tells from the beginning. Of the Aitken Clay Ditch in Yankton County, how wide the bottom is. And how wide the top is, and it was all dug at a one-to-one slope. And it goes all the way to the Vermillion River. With that in here, so. In the future, I, I would assume that is. In law.
Well, if it's, if that's.
The minutes of the, this is intended to the. From Yankton and Clay, February twenty-fourth, nineteen ten. Very interesting reading. If you want, I'll lend you the thumb drive and you don't have to give it back. It's. Yeah, it was fun reading, but I found it anyway. So I, I'll make you a copy if you want it. Or whatever, but it is in there, so we do have something kind of to go by. I'm pretty sure we're outside of that now, but.
What was the right away from the center?
Well, it starts at the beginning was pretty narrow.
Yeah, there's three stretches, right, Rod? There's. Up towards the headlands, it's real narrow, and then there's the middle stretch, it's wider, and then one near the river, it's wider yet.
Yeah, so it says it's seventeen point three eight miles long. But yeah, all the legal descriptions. Were fifteen thousand feet, it's two feet. Three, you know, for the next fifteen thousand feet, it's seven feet. For the next four thousand, it's twelve up to sixteen. Feet. And that slope was all at one-to-one. And then the ground on the outside went from the center line from anywhere from twenty-seven and a half feet. To seventy-five feet.
So, center of the creek, just one way.
One way. That's the way I'm reading it. So there should be doors down in this area should be hundred and fifty foot of. Right away, correct. Well, they don't actually call it right away. It just says a strip of ground on each side of the center of the line. For the proposed ditch.
They call that an easement or?
No, it just says a strip of ground. It doesn't really. Unless, you know, I haven't read every word. But this was done between Yankton and Clay County.
Where Eastman hadn't been admitted yet.
No, probably not. It, it's pretty, uh, crude compared to. Some of the descriptions and construction now, but. That's the only other thing I had to add.
Okay. Anything else for ditch work?
I, I, I got some. I can update you on FEMA stuff on the ditch. But same ditch board, right?
Yep.
Or do you need?
It is the same ditch board, um. You're, you've got all your questions answered.
I, I think so, 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 um. I. I've been visiting with Latoya Bell. From FEMA and she sent me a, a list of, of kind of questions for me to clarify, which I will, and then, um. I, I, and, uh. Um, asked a question and I said, hey, you know, we, 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 we had a letting, we have a number. And it's a lump sum. So we may prorate that. The, the, the deal is the tree removal. Does not. FEMA won't pay for the tree removal, but they will the other, so we're gonna. Prorate that and I'm, I'll work with, I just want to let you know that. I think, you know, she did kind of say, hey, maybe, you know, don't do anything until we, we got this. Figured out.
Okay.
So I, anyway, so, so, um. I have not sent anything to the contractor. I have talked to him so that he knows. Why he hasn't seen anything. He, and, um, so I'll, I'll work on that and get that through, through FEMA. Um, it was a very list, Latin lawn, a little landfill, just things, a. Little things like that. It's very, very, very simple for me to do. But the, the key one is, is, is prorating the, the cost between tree removal. And that one, so, so that's, that, that, that's the big, the zinger. On, on that one, so.
The tree removal, that's what's in the. Not the living trees, that's what is washed in the ditch.
Well, that kind of stuff would be all right, but the, the, where we got, where we're gonna grind the trees down and all that, okay, that doesn't. It's not gonna be cut or gotten under FEMA, just the other obstruction removals. So, that's, so I'm working on that and I'll, I'll, I'll have that taken care of. And then I visit with the contractor on the, the, the first section. It, it's gonna be after, just after the beginning of the year when he plans on starting that. I don't have the bonds and stuff from him yet. He's working on it, so that's. Where that's at, I don't know, but probably here in the next meeting or two, I'll have a, have that.
He's not gonna start digging though when it's frozen, right?
Yeah, he didn't plan on start, I think what. Yeah, he won't. I think, you know, the idea is, is get in there when the ground's hard and chew the, get the trees out and then. You know, he's got till next December to get it, but, but I think that was his plan. Was to start off the trees and then when he can, he will. Get the earth powder. And then there was the other FEMA thing. The EEIs, which I had no. This essential, you on that?
I thought I killed all them out.
Okay, here's, um. Yes. But here's what happens, what she's explained is when you fill them out, then sometimes that, that kicks another. Kicks it to another window to fill out. I just related what she told.
Those are just for the culverts.
Yes, those two culverts, yeah. So she, she was gonna look at those. I haven't seen anything from her yet. But what she did say is, is yep, the county filled them out, but what happens then? If you like, fill them out or check a radio button, it flips you doing, it's gonna flip you to another screen to do another. Fill out and radio button thing. That's, that's where, that's where, that's the deal. And I will, if I hear from her, I'll.
Well, appreciate your help with that. He's about the tenth person we've had to deal with.
Yeah.
They all seem to get sick. And never come back. I, I. Dealing with me, bud.
Okay, now she, so far has been very easy to. Very upbeat, you know, it's been, been very easy. And she sent me this stuff right away. It's been hard, so just. Otherwise, yeah, that's it for, we're around with the ditches.
So move.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, we're in regular session.
What am I gonna do? It's not new yet.
It was time. You're not done with the, yeah. I am. We're not. Um, that everybody could see the vouchers.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it, bro. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, motion passes.
Well, the good thing is.
Five-minute recess before we go into executive session.
Alright.
I'm gonna just. Three.
Okay, we're back in session. I'll entertain a motion to go into the executive session.
So move.
Legal. Legal personnel and contractual.
Thanks. I'll second it.
A motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, we're, we're in executive session. Now I'll take that motion.
Make motion come out of the executive session.
Second.
A motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, we're in regular session.
Move to come to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Those rascals are still up.
Oh, God, yes.